Martha Arnold, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Where's Martha?
Because I don't get to see you that often.
I'm glad you lead us through the flag of the United States of America to the recapping which stands one nation under God, indivisible, ever to be reduced to nothing.
Welcome.
Wow, it sounds kind of different with as many people in the room. Let's see here. All right, public announcements. Just want to thank everybody for being here this evening. Normally, we don't have this much attention, anything we've ever got on the agenda.
Watch out for fires.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A call to the public.
I apologize, Mayor. We have a Bill Gilchrist who has not indicated what item, so possibly call to public.
Okay.
Number two?
I'm just going to talk about 52nd Street for about a minute. So I appreciate, we've been talking to a number of council people. Council people, and I've been talking to Hal quite a bit, and thankfully, we're going to have local traffic only signs put at either end of 52nd Street, which will be at least a beginning in reducing some of the speeding and shortcutting that is sure to increase even further. And we still are holding out hope and will work for speed bumps, I think, and would hope at some point that it would end up on the council's agenda and be discussed. But thanks, Hal, and we want to preserve our neighborhood and have it be a neighborhood where people can walk their dogs and walk their kids and ride their bikes and not get hit in the future.
That's all.
That's all of them? Well, okay. Let's see, Town Manager?
Mayor, members of council, I've gotten quite a few questions from both, a couple of council members and people from the public about the development on Carefree Highway, so I thought I'd just give you an update. I actually met with the superintendent of the Sprouts, we call it the Sprouts Project, but there's more than Sprouts going in at that development, south of Carefree Highway, and Stuart Jean today, and they are still on track to turn over the building for the Sprouts January 3rd, which was always their target date. Sprouts will take about 30 days or so to build out the interior, and traditionally, they open on the first Wednesday of the month, so that would be the first Wednesday of February is what they're looking at for opening. In addition to Sprouts there, there is a Chase Bank scheduled to be constructed, a Chipotle, a mod pizza, a sandwich shop, and Heartland Dental.
What?
And Heartland Dental. And so far, all of them are on target to get their permits in and construct so that they would open at the same time the building is turned over to Sprouts, and that has to do with contractual obligations of getting their business open by a certain date. Otherwise, they can't open for quite some time after Sprouts opens, so that's their legal obligation. So that's what's going in there. Secondly, I just wanted to read for council and the public a press release that came out because our finance director is here to give a quarterly report, and his department, the Town of Cave Creek Finance Department, has been issued the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting this year. It is awarded to the Town of Cave Creek by the Government Finance Officers Association for its comprehensive annual finance report, and this is for the last report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to that department, the finance department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFER, which is the comprehensive annual financial report. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. And with that? I'm getting that look from Robert.
Stand up, stand up!
How dare you! That's all I have. We have a long meeting tonight, we can get to...
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Advanced agenda?
Hmm?
Advanced agenda. I know it's not on here as usual, but I'd just like to look for an advanced agenda consideration.
Okay.
Well, for the gentleman who just stood up and asked for his signage and so on and so forth, I'd like to have that put on Agenda Item for Discussion. After the traffic that goes up and down there is completed, so that we can look into that and try and take care of that as well, okay?
All right, okay, moving right along. Consent Agenda, Agenda Item Number One, cancellation September 3rd, 2019, regular town council meeting. Item number two on there, approval of July 15th, 2019, regular town council meeting minutes. Item number three on there, approval of the number 19, remote tasting room application for Elysian Desert Distilleries Incorporated, requested by the owner, Agent Renee Deanne McQuigan. And do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor signify by seeing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I clearly have it. Moving on to General Agenda Item...
You can't leave!
Okay, so here's the question. Did I butcher the names or did I do okay?
No, it was perfect. We're proud to be in the town.
General Agenda Item Number One, presentation to council by David Court, Executive Director, and Robert Hindle, President of the Desert Foothills Library, and the impact of the library and the community, followed by discussion with council. I knew I saw you sitting there.
Good evening, Mayor Bunch. Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for letting me come tonight to make this presentation, just to keep you up to date with what's happening at the library. I'm joined tonight by President of the Library Board, Robert Hindle, and I will be doing most of the talking, but Rob will be happy to assist me with answering any questions there might be. And what I'd like to do is start the presentation with a question. Is this the most important building in Cave Creek?
It's one of the most important buildings in Cave Creek.
I wouldn't be presumptuous enough to expect you to say yes, but...
It's one of the most visible.
One of the most visible, yes, yeah, yep. So what I'll try and do during this presentation is just sort of give you some evidence of the impact that the library is having on the community. So our mission is to enrich the Desert Foothills community by promoting literacy and advancing knowledge through library resources and programs that inspire and support lifelong learning. My favorite word in that mission statement is the word inspire, and I think we have been relatively successful. We're working very hard to increase things, from the youngest of our patrons to the oldest. And I must apologize to these two couples for saying they're the oldest. My only saving grace is the two ladies there are both volunteers at the library, and their husbands, so I think I'm on reasonable ground here. So when I ask the question of, is this one of the most important buildings in Cave Creek, I want to sort of give you some data to back that up. Why? Why is it? The library is the literary, cultural, and educational hub of the town. It's a place where the whole community can gather. Our fiscal year for the library is 1st of July, and for the year ending 30th of June of this year, we had had 110,000 people visit the library. During that period, we circulated 91,000 physical items, and we also circulated 5,500 We have hosted several community meetings. Come on, Bruce, cheer. Including this one, the Dark Skies Initiative Meeting. We had 150 people at this meeting, standing room only. I can personally attest to that because I can't even count the number of chairs that I moved that evening. But it has become a fabulous place to be able to, for us to be able to offer the town as a community resource. Tomorrow morning, we have a Teddy Bear's Picnic Storytime in that room, just in case anyone's interested. Grandchildren welcome. And nor why. In the same year that I gave you earlier, we ran 1,076 programs for adults, and they were attended by 15,699 people. Click, 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 click. We had 198 programs for youth, which were attended by 2,345 children. We processed 1,303 passport applications on behalf of the Department of State. We have rooms available for everyone, including local small business. It's one of the expansion areas for us, working, one of our librarians is an ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce, and we have been able to offer opportunities for many of the local businesses to come in and run programs. We have 12 employees and over 120 volunteers, and we have a total of around 8,000 cardholders, of whom 2,167 reside in the Town of Cave Creek. We like to think of the library as a community participant. We don't sort of sit in isolation of the whole community, and we try to work with the community wherever we can, including Dark Skies. But we collaborated with the Cave Creek Museum. We've hosted a number of their larger programs. They don't have the space, so they come to us, and we run the programs jointly. We're a collection point for the Foothills Food Bank. We have worked with the Foothills Care Corps. We've hosted a Healthy Aging Expo for them, and also we have their neighbors come on a monthly basis for a movie, which is one of the only places they can come for that. And we've also worked with the Desert Foothills Land Trust, sorry, for whom we've hosted events and one of their major fundraisers. So this comes at a cost, and I also want to look at the future. This is all done at no cost to the Town of Cave Creek. We think this is a pretty good deal for both the council, the town, and for the residents, and we hope that you agree. For the first time ever in this fiscal year, our annual budget has exceeded $1 million. So we have to work very hard on fundraising. In order to make the library continue to be successful, the board has undertaken over many years, many strategic planning workshops, but at the last one, we ended, we came to a conclusion that we would lead through innovation and have three strategic areas to work on. First one is to reinvent the library. So what does a library mean to many people in the community these days? It is no longer a collection of books, DVDs, whatever you like to borrow from a library. It's a community space for everyone. We need to transform our business model. Our business has always been, for a very long time, been based on a huge use of volunteers, which we don't intend to change, but we need more professional staff. And one impact of that is that our budget is $1 million for the first time. We now have four librarians and six full-time staff, including all of those librarians. We are putting together new programs. We're currently adding to one of our rooms a demonstration kitchen with a view to expanding the programs we offer so that we can attract a new group of users to the library. I do want to say at this stage, though, that we are 100% committed to providing a good library for this community. We still have over 50,000 volumes in our library, and our library shelves are pretty stacked, and if you go to another library in the valley, anywhere, you will find a lot of space. So we do still have a very good collection. We need to raise our profile. This is another one of our strategic framework items. It's amazing how many people in the community, not just Cave Creek, the community we serve, which would be Carefree, North Scottsdale, North Phoenix County areas. It's amazing how many of those people don't even know the library exists. We need to address that. We need to grow our base of support, and in order to do that, we will need increased marketing, both paid and by word of mouth. And we need to embrace new technology. We need to evolve as a relevant community information center. We need to know what our customer, our community uses and what they expect of us, and we need to integrate technology into our programs. One area that we're going to be investigating this year is virtual reality, which is an area that people in every demographic can be interested in. It may be kids using virtual reality, it may be our teen room, virtual reality for entertainment, pure entertainment, or for older folks who can't get out and about, can't travel. It could be virtue, going around the world in virtual reality. All of these resources are available at a cost. So what do we need from the town? I've already said that the library is a very important part of the community. Hopefully, you wouldn't disagree with that. Wouldn't you want to promote the use of the library as one of the best resources available to your residents and to potential investors? Please mention the library, be advocates for the library, and please, if you can, Tom, use the library. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, Robert and I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I believe Councilwoman Clancy wants to ask you something.
Well, my question would be to Carrie, do we have something that links the library to our...
Website?
Website?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so if somebody comes in, wants to know about Cave Creek, is it to your satisfaction as to what we have on the Internet, or would you like to see that expanded? And if you do, what would you like to bring forward to us to put on there?
I'm not sure, Carrie, whether what we have is to my satisfaction, but I can certainly look at it. And there is a link to our website.
Okay.
So whatever happens, the worst thing that can happen is they'd end up at our website, which is a brand-new website.
You must have a good website.
It's a brand-new website, so...
Good, so that's helpful. I just wanted to make sure we did have a link.
Yeah.
And a picture. That's a beautiful picture.
Yeah, that's taken by drone. My first experience of drone. I didn't take a picture.
Councilwoman McGuire?
I understand you've had some awards as a...
Yes, we...
...library, well-represented this community and area, but what awards have you received?
The library was awarded the Impact Award by the Carefree Cave Creek Chamber of Commerce, which we were very proud about because, as mentioned to you tonight, you know, we have to make an impact, and that was, we do a lot of outreach, and therefore, I think we are making inroads, but it's slow. We, I know Nextdoor, which is a social webpage that people can use, we've been voted a favorite in there. One interesting thing was that the Phoenix Business Journal has categories of business users within the, which they report, the top 10, the top 20. We are actually in the cultural and educational area, the 28th biggest nonprofit in the valley, which I think actually, for this town, is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say that my experience, the experience of other people that have gone into the library, have found the service, the volunteers, the facilities to be exceptional.
Any other questions in council? All right, there's public comment on this, I believe. We have nothing, no. Mr. Court, thank you so much for everything that you all do.
My pleasure. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the second read of Town Case Number Z-19-01, Cave Creek Hospital Zone Change Request. Council discussion, consideration of possible approval of Town Case Z-19-01, Cave Creek Hospital. Zone change request to amend the Town of Cave Creek zoning map per ordinance number 2019-04 for two parcels, 211-46-034B and 211-46-050B, totaling approximately four acres from a desert rural residential DR-43 zone to a general commercial GC zone. Mr. Cosman?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the second reading for the ordinance, as you've stated, for the property located adjacent to Sprouts between 53rd and 52nd Street on the south side of Carefree Highway. The application is a proposed change from DR-43, Desert Rural 43, to general commercial. The site plan was supported at the Planning Commission. Their recommendation was passed for the site plan on Thursday by a vote of 6 to 0. That'll be coming to the council next month. Really, that's, the staff has nothing, nothing further from the first reading except the minutes showed that the council wanted a condition within the, within the ordinance. That's been put in bill, and the applicant worked on putting a section in that allows the town to schedule a public hearing and cause the property to revert back to desert rural DR-43 pursuant to state statutes if the site is not developed or permit has not been issued three years from the date of the site plan, so...
It sounds like they're moving a lot faster than that.
They are moving very fast.
You know, we got a room full of people here. Could you give a brief overview of what we're actually doing here, because there's people here who likely don't know what we're...
Sure. Typically, a, an application for a zone change would also have a site plan. There would be two separate applications. They staggered their, submittal of their application. This is for the microhospital, if anybody's heard.
That's kind of what I wanted you to talk about.
Yes, yes, so it would be a, it would be a inpatient emergency care facility, a microhospital. It's state licensed. The applicant discussed at the Planning Commission hearing for the site plan, it is, it's classified as a general hospital, so they could take really any, any type of patient could be presented there, and the full-service, full-service acute care. So they're working with the Sprouts Development for all their off-site work, and so it all, it all matches. Sprouts is putting in a light, and they're adjusting their plans to accommodate for the traffic signal at 53rd Street. Other than that, the council will see the site plan, grading and drainage landscaping, everything at next month's meeting. The zone change will have an effective period of 30 days from tonight's second reading. You'll see the site plan before the effective date.
And this is in that area, the general plan that was changed in 2011, making it...
That is correct, yeah. This, we refer to this area as Area 18, consisted of 18 properties that the town reclassified for mixed use, which allows the applicant to pursue any change to any zoning category, and they've, they've requested general commercial.
Thank you. Any other questions in council? Councilwoman Clancy?
Just really a comment. I attended that meeting, and I think the most significant thing that was said was by the applicant, is that for most of you sitting here, that in the future, within six minutes, your life can be stabilized. And instead of 26 minutes or more where we live now, six minutes is close. I think that from a safety and health and welfare of those who live here, it could be minor, but you can be stabilized and taken to another hospital. That, to me, is critical. Someday, I may need it, but at least it'll be there for family and friends, and a, I don't know what circumference of miles it'll cover, but I would say within 10 miles of us, I think a lot of people will benefit from it, so I'm very much in favor of this.
Anything else from council? All right, we do have public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing at this point in time.
I'm not really either for or against the hospital, and I want to address what Bill Gilchrist was talking about, was the traffic on 52nd Street. The more it's going in, the worse it's going to get, and this isn't anything new. I wrote a letter to Osama Ubrajon in April 2006 about the traffic on 52nd Street, and a letter to the Cave Creek Sheriff Department. The only thing that came of that was the sheriff set up radar on 52nd Street and was very busy. So that's what I would like to see addressed, the traffic on 52nd Street. The hospital is probably as good as anything to put on the corner, but there's a lot of other stuff going in that's going to be, generate more traffic on that street. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Martha Arnold?
It's great to see so many people here tonight.
I can't believe it. You thought there'd be a lynching.
No, we got lots to talk about. My name is Martha Arnold. I reside at 6111 East Fleming Springs Road. This letter is to thank the council for voting yes for the proposed mini-hospital. When I arrived in Cave Creek, there was no ambulance service. If a situation appeared to need medical attention, the deputy would put you in his car and over a two-lane road with many dips, take that person to the emergency room at John C. Lincoln. In those days, Scottsdale only had a very small hospital all the way down on Osborne. In the '50s, a physician... In the '50s, a physician and his wife bought the Sierra Mr. Guest Ranch. When Dr. Owens retired, he and his wife Jean moved to the ranch. Dr. Owens, with the support of the Cave Creek Improvement Association, organized a volunteer ambulance service. A used ambulance was bought. Local residents volunteered, attended classes, and were certified to be either attendants or ambulance drivers. And the crew changed every 24 hours. One of the stories that went around about that service was there was a call to pick up a patient at the very eastern end of Fleming Springs Road. The ambulance broke down coming down the hill, and the patient got out and walked home because they were tired of waiting for repairs. I'm aware of only one of those volunteers remains in town, and that's Billy Crooks. We owe Dr. Owens and the group of volunteers a grateful thank you. In the early '70s, Doctors Wyland, Weinman, and Chapman opened the Cave Creek Clinic in a suite in the front building of the Cave Creek motel. The facility, over the years, has moved to various locations. Dr. Chapman made the decision to remain in the area and practice as a family general practitioner. He made the decision to be a GP, which was not popular at the time. He's still with us, by the way. Those of us who have been here through the years are grateful for his presence. At the same time, Rural Metro became a part of the healthcare community and was located at the southeast corner of Cave Creek Road and Tom Darlington Drive. To this day, I send my annual fee to Rural Metro for their fire protection and the ambulance service.
Three minutes.
I often wonder how many people in here do that? How many people are aware of it? And how many people really care enough to do it? It's a very important item for our community. And now, we have the opportunity to have our own emergency hospital. How many lives will that save? I'm grateful to Abrazo for looking north. I encourage the council for their support of the requests before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha, thanks for the history lesson. I love those stories like that.
Me too.
I know you do. Is that all we've got on it? All right, we're back to council for a motion.
Oh.
Close the hearing. Now we're back to council for a motion.
Which one was that, second, third?
Two.
Two, okay. Council, motion to approve Town Case Number Z-1901, Cave Creek Hospital Zone Change Request, and give second reading to Ordinance Number 02019-04, an ordinance of the mayor and the council of the Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official Town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of four-acre property parcel 211-46-034B and 211-46-050B from Rural Desert Rural Residential DR-43 zone to a general commercial GC zone.
Second.
All right, all those in further motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Looks like we're gonna get one of them here, and I'm really thrilled about it. It makes, I think it makes us more of a complete community. Now we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Presentation, Council Discussion on Council Request for an Assessment of the Capabilities of Existing Organizations to Respond to and Assess Brush Fires and Major Wildfire Incidences Placed on the Agenda by Councilwoman, Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Mayor, members of council, I have a summary of Councilmember Clancy's request from the meeting last month that gives a little bit of detail while we're setting up for the presentation. So specifically, she asked us to assess the capabilities of existing organizations. Notice, several organizations are here. Two, respond and suppress fire, brush fires originating within the town limits, and a strategy to prevent these from destroying property or harming residents. B, respond to major incidences, especially those originating outside of town limits, especially in the Tonto National Forest or state land. One, advise of any planning and need for pre-planning, assess the needs to analyze and improve fire-water systems to defend the town. Two, assess the effectiveness and make recommendations regarding communications during emergencies. And it goes on, but there was also discussion about the globe chamomile throughout the community and the challenges that brings and adds to fire prevention and firefighting in our community and beyond. And so, we're going to start on the resources and abilities for the town to address those emergencies. And who's got the clicker?
I got the clicker.
Would you like to click the next slide, sir?
I wanna click.
Please? So, we, we have several agreements. Cave Creek has agreements and associations in the event of emergencies, beginning with Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management. We have an intergovernmental agreement, coordinate emergency management, the town's emergency operation plan, and access to reverse 911. Rural Metro provides fire and emergency medical services. We have the Code Red. In the presentation, the Town Marshal will go into details about the town's system for emergency notification. We have agreements with Maricopa County Flood Control. They provide critical flood warning and measurement devices. Antonton National Forest is an additional layer of protection to the town along our northern border in particular. And so, Marshal Adam Stein will be giving a PowerPoint presentation, and he has lots of backup, and will take questions at the end, if that's okay?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight. For the record, I did choose the colors of all the slide presentations. I've already taken some abuse for it, but I think it's pretty, so, okay. Tonight, we're gonna have Jesus Haro from, he's an emergency services planner with Maricopa County Emergency Management. We have Chief John Kratz from Rural Metro Fire Department. We have Steve Waters, the Flood Control Manager with Maricopa County Flood Control. And we have David Ramirez, who's the Division Chief of the Tonto National Forest. Starting with the Department of Emergency Management, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management. Through that agreement, the town has a bunch of different emergency operations plans, including the multi-hazard mitigation plan and the Maricopa County Community Wildfire Protection Plan as well. Again, through the IGA, they help us draft that in terms of the management in our community. Through the intergovernmental agreement, we have a separate intergovernmental agreement to aid surrounding communities. If a need were to arise for assistance for surrounding jurisdictions, we have the ability to offer responsive capabilities to them, and they can respond into our town as well. Cave Creek has a multi-tiered response to emergencies within the town. It starts with a call to 911. If a resident or visitor calls 911, it is received by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, and then the sheriff's office decides if it's gonna be a police or a fire or a medical emergency. If it's a police emergency, obviously, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office will respond to it. If it's a fire or medical, Rural Metro will be transferred the call, and then again, train dispatchers are directing the people who call 911 how to take immediate action while first responders, whether it be fire, police, or medical, are responding to the emergency. Fire response within Cave Creek, again, Chief Kratz is here from Rural Metro. Rural Metro's Fire Department has responded to 592 requests for service over the past 12-month period. When I saw that number, I was thinking, wow, that's a lot of fires in our town. But it turns out, 592 is a big number, but that includes everything from snake removal to just public service calls, medical calls as well. Of the 592, only 12 of those calls for service were actual fires that required some type of remedy from the Rural Metro Fire Department and their partners. Of those 12 fires, three were structure fires, nine were brush fires, and again, Rural Metro responds with surrounding jurisdictions as well, which we'll get into later. Rural Metro does have assets in Cave Creek and Carefree, two separate fire stations that respond within Cave Creek. Assets for Rural Metro that are stationed in the area, at the Cave Creek Station, they have an engine. They have a Type 6 brush truck, which is capable, has four-wheel drive, and has some water on it, and they have a water tender, which, we live in a desert, water's pretty important, particularly for fires. Carefree Station has an engine, and they have a fire-rescue ambulance. So as far as emergency fire response within the Town of Cave Creek and surrounding areas, when a call for service comes in, particularly a fire, battalion chief is notified. On the actual fire engine itself is a senior officer at the captain level, and between the battalion chief and the captain, they're evaluating the emergency as it came in. Whether multiple calls, is there a heavy smoke showing, you know, what's the, the ability for that fire to expand in a rapid manner? So in the event that the emergency is reported as a structure fire or a brush fire, typically, Rural Metro would call mutual aid at that point. The Town of Cave Creek has a signed mutual aid agreement with surrounding jurisdictions, as we previously noted in the presentation. Mutual aid would entail additional resources from surrounding agencies. So for example, for a working structure fire, Rural Metro would typically request a residential response, which would consist of three engines, one ladder truck, one battalion chief. So not only do you have the Rural Metro Fire Department responding to the emergency with their assets, we also at times have City of Phoenix, City of Scottsdale, Daisy Mountain, and other jurisdictions responding to Cave Creek fires and emergencies. We value those relationships. If you have a worker, working fire in Cave Creek, a working fire initial response, what is that? So again, if there's a structure fire in Cave Creek, the Cave Creek and the Carefree Fire Stations would respond, whatever assets they have available. Surrounding Rural Metro units would go into what's known as a move-up status. They have another fire station in Rio Verde that would be shuffling assets in our direction. The battalion chief of Rural Metro would again, request mutual aid assets, and then typically, for a working fire, we'd see at least three engines, ladder, rescue truck, a battalion chief, and again, we'd have the Cave Creek, Rural Metro, and the Carefree Rural Metro Stations responding. Let's say it's getting kind of worse for us, we have a first alarm response. What does that mean? So for first response, first, excuse me, a first alarm response, you'd have seven engines, two ladder trucks, two rescue trucks, four battalion chiefs. Again, this is in addition to whatever the Rural Metro assets are already on scene. You know, Cave Creek is blessed, we're surrounded by jurisdictions that have very robust fire departments and agencies, and again, the amount of manpower that they come with, as well as their additional resources as far as chiefs, is a tremendous asset. Brush fires in the town, which obviously weren't our brush fire season, so again, if there's a brush fire in town, obviously, the Cave Creek assets and the Carefree assets from Rural Metro would respond. Again, if it sounds like a brush fire that's gonna be rapidly expanding, the battalion chief or the captain of the engine has a ability to request an additional first alarm, which would bring two engines, two brush trucks, a tender tanker, and a battalion chief in addition to the already typical response we see from Rural Metro. And again, that was an initial brush fire response. First alarm, if it was growing and it was causing a concern for rapid spread, would be upgraded to a first alarm brush response, which is five engines, four brush trucks, two tender tankers, and four battalion chiefs. We also have the ability to access the Tonto National Forest Fire Department assets, as well as hot shots for major incidents that may occur brush fire-wise within the Cave Creek area. People often ask, they say, hey, you know, we don't have an airport in Cave Creek, although we do have one in Carefree. Do we have the ability to have air support? And the answer is yes. Cave Creek does have access to the air tankers and the helicopters for firefighting in the event of a serious brush fire. Cave Creek and Rural Metro do a drill every year, typically every year, with the Arizona Department of Public Safety. They have their helicopters land in Cave Creek. They set up Bambi buckets with the State Division of Fire Management and the State Forest Service, and they practice, the pilots from Department of Public Safety, practice coming into Cave Creek, picking up water out of a set-up water tank, and then the Rural Metro Fire Department would call in what they consider hot spots. The pilots from DPS will come in, pick up a load of water. I'm not a pilot of any means, but evidently, it is, changes the characteristics of their flying, carrying this bucket of water underneath their police helicopter, and then, it's basically like target practice for Bambi buckets. And they'll go throughout Cave Creek where the, where we've set up, and they'll practice dropping on specific simulated hot spots. Fascinating to watch, and you know, it's good that they come to town and they familiarize themselves with Cave Creek, and it's just a good drill every year. And like I said, we get a lot of phone calls because we have so many helicopters in town for that. Another unique aspect of Cave Creek's emergency response plans is we have Code Red. How many people have Code Red that signed up for it on their phones? Last man as we hope for, okay. Code Red is the way the town notifies people in the event of an emergency in Cave Creek. We're actually the first jurisdiction in the state of Arizona to go with Code Red many, many years ago after the Cave Creek Complex fire. Residents can go on our website, click the link, sign up for Code Red, and what Code Red does is it's an app that would go on your phone, and in the event of an emergency and the town's trying to put out an emergency notification, your phone would go off, and it's text messages, email, and voice data. Code Red, even if you haven't subscribed, Code Red has a proprietary underlying data for the jurisdictions, so they already have a lot of the phone numbers populated into the program. So again, even if you haven't subscribed, if you live within Cave Creek and somewhere they've caught that number, you would be notified. Every once in a while, we have residents that move out of town and will get that phone call, please remove us, remove them as well. But again, it's a great notification system. The way it works is if there's an emergency in town requiring the rapid notification of our residents, whoever's on duty is the emergency manager, whether it's myself, town manager, or the billing official, would make a determination that we have to blanket the town with a notification. So we have the ability, two types of notifications that we have with Code Red. We have one that's, we could notify the entire jurisdiction, so basically, the entire town boundaries of the Town of Cave Creek would go out. We'd all receive a phone call, a text message, an email alert. Or we could do a very specific targeted notification, so let's say we need to notify within a one-to-three-mile area of a particular incident, we'd launch this Code Red alert, and it would notify the residents in that area. We've never actually had to launch a Code Red here, thank God, we haven't had any issues, but it's a good tool to have, because again, if there was an emergency where we had to evacuate, there's an emergency if we had a shelter in place, that's how we'd notify our residents. A lot of our residents, and imagine more hands are going past this question, get utility alerts from Cave Creek. So in the event that we have a water boil emergency, where you have to boil your water, in the event that we have a severe break in the water lines, water outage is gonna be for a while, we'll notify residents using the Code Red system, but we call it a utility alert. That's where Sean gets to use the system, so we do share our tools, which is good. Code Red also offers a weather alert. Again, I recommend that all the residents sign up for that as well. The Code Red Weather Alert is kind of cool, because you're not getting alerts based on what's going on in City of Phoenix, what's going on in Gila Bend, no offense, Steve. Steve Waters sends out alerts when there's large storm cells in our area that's gonna affect us, possibly have flooding. What Code Red Weather Alert does is specific to Cave Creek, and they'll send out an alert for thunderstorms, lightning, flash floods, high winds, et cetera. So again, just a really good program, and we do encourage the residents to sign up for it. It's just a good tool to have. Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management, McDAM is a great partner for us. They help prepare the emergency operations plans, and they assist Cave Creek in the event of an emergency. What's great about McDAM, one of the things that's great about McDAM, Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management, is in the event of a large-scale emergency, they have the ability to help the town as far as, they could send additional emergency managers, they could also help get additional resources if needed, and just a great asset for us. And again, we do have an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management. And again, Jesus Haro is here from there. Maricopa County Flood Control, we, again, we have Steve Waters with us, who's the Flood Warning Manager. Cave Creek partners with Maricopa County Flood Control, and you know, I'm not gonna say during this monsoon season, because we really haven't had much rain, but typical monsoon seasons, Steve Waters and his department are monitoring the storms, letting us know ahead of time if we're gonna expect any type of heavy rain flow, if we're gonna expect any type of washes to flow, so we can go ahead and put our resources out there. So we can go ahead and put our resources out there and take care of that before there's a problem. Steve and his team, particularly Chandra Miller, helped draft the Cave Creek Flood Response Plan. And again, we value that relationship and they bring a lot to the table for our town. Steve and his team do a great job, again, of alerting us of any problems that are going to occur, typically flooding, heavy rain, lightning, heavy winds. A lot of times, it's really nice and sunny in Cave Creek, and I'll get a phone call from Steve and he says, hey, brace yourself, there's a heavy stream flow coming your way. And even though it's nice and sunny in Cave Creek, and now a drop of rain in the basins up north, it receives some rain and causes our washes to flow. Steve's able to tell, based on his experience and based on his tools, but he also has stream flow gauges that are able to tell him when there's going to be a flow and what velocity that flow is. Then we look at our flood response plan and we make appropriate decisions based on that flood response plan. Those of you that enjoy weather, you can go to Maricopa County Flood Control's website and they have an interactive maps where you can see all the stream flow data. We do have a bunch of them in Cave Creek and we do value that relationship as well. For the Tonto National Forest, again, we have division chief David Ramirez. And Tonto National Forest brings a lot to the table. Obviously located close to Cave Creek, they're obviously experienced at putting out wildland fires. They also do a tremendous amount of fuel reduction in the area. So one of David's jobs is to make sure, again, that if they have a fire, it's not going to affect us. More importantly, if we have a fire in Cave Creek, it's not going to affect the Tonto National Forest. So what they do is they come out, they look in the surrounding areas, they see if there's a hazard or a particular hazard that they need to suggest or work on that will help thin out the materials that are going to burn and help mitigate the potential for a fire within the Tonto National Forest. Just a great resource to have in our area and we're very blessed to have them. Again, Tonto National Forest is not only committed to the national forest, but the surrounding communities. If we're in good health as a community fire-wise, they're in good health as well, because again, that's one less place they have to worry about receiving fires from our jurisdiction going into their jurisdiction. Right now, we're going to talk about Cave Creek capabilities. Someone actually went out and counted all the fire hydrants in Cave Creek. We had 230 fire hydrants. We currently have a capacity of 3.5 million gallons of available water storage in the event of a major fire. Cave Creek maintains three water trucks, which each hold approximately 4,000 gallons of water. On each one of those water trucks is an interconnect that they could use to hook up to a Rural Metro engine and backfeed them with water requested by Rural Metro. We also have the ability with those water trucks to aggressively water down swaths of land in the event of a potential wildfire to help prevent the spreading at Rural Metro's request. Cave Creek also has a lot of earth-moving equipment, front-end loaders, a grade tractor which can be deployed to maintain fire breaks in the event of an emergency. Again, all assets that are readily available in the event of an emergency. We have numerous chainsaws, shovels, rakes, again, to help out if we needed it. We also maintain two fire warning signs in Cave Creek, advising both visitors and residents of the fire danger, the current fire danger in Cave Creek at the time. We also maintain a fire danger warning on our website for residents that want to read it. As far as awareness, Cave Creek does maintain literature within our town hall, both in the main building and in the utilities area, explaining about Code Red, wildland fires, fire dangers, defensible zones around homes. And then Rural Metro conducts home safety reviews upon request for their subscribers. You just have to call Chief Kratz and they'll send the crew over, take a look. They'll go over hazards that are in your home and around your home, as well as providing an assessment of your defensible spaces around your houses. We're going to get into that in another video shortly. As far as illegal burning in Cave Creek, Cave Creek did adopt the International Fire Code. Section 307.1 addresses illegal burning. Typically, if you receive a call for service for illegal burn in Cave Creek, Rural Metro would respond first. They would talk to the owners or whoever's responsible for the illegal burn, obviously put out the illegal burn, and try and educate them as to the legalities of burning. If that doesn't work, then obviously myself or the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office can be called and we can issue a Class 1 misdemeanor citation for conducting illegal burn in town. In the event that a person conducts an illegal burn in town, let's say they're burning their trash, they don't take the proper precautions, and that fire spreads and it damages other people's property and causes some problems, then the court would have the ability, if they wanted, to seek restitution and charge that person for the additional damage to people's properties and resources. Invasive species, you know, I think the mayor and the council have done a really good job of aggressively telling everyone about the globe chamomile. Residents have been advised basically to remove it, maintain defensible areas around their homes. Unfortunately, it's about two weeks ago, we had a structure fire in a home in Cave Creek, which resulted in the destruction of an outer building located on their property. The property had a very large area of globe chamomile. We were very lucky, again, through the response of our fire department and the mutual aid partners that we have that were on site, you know, Daisy Mountain was on site, City of Phoenix was on site, obviously Rural Metro was on site. They were able to hit the fire quickly and strongly and knock it down. As you can see, there's quite a bit of globe chamomile there. What's particularly troubling is if you look at it, it leads right up to the buildings on the property. So even if you remove the globe chamomile on your property, if your neighbor's property butts yours and they have their globe chamomile, it can come up to your structure and put you in additional danger. So again, we were very lucky at this particular fire and it wasn't a very windy day, it was knocked down quite quickly and didn't spread too much, it's just another view. But again, it's in our best interest that the globe chamomile is removed from town, in your best interest not to have it around your property as well. It is extremely flammable. You have to work together as neighbors, as a community as well, to help manage this threat. Each property owner has to do their part in eliminating the globe chamomile threat. The town's helped remove it from our town properties in our right-of-ways. But again, we need the residents to remove it from their private property and to help, if our neighbors don't have the ability to remove it, to help them remove it. I think, again, the town's doing a good job of getting it out. The globe chamomile is not our friends, not a good thing to have in town. We are helping to remove it. Again, each property owner is responsible to remove it from their private property. So please do look at your property, remove it if it's there. If your neighbor needs help, please lend a hand to them and let's help mitigate that fire risk best we can. Myself and the panel are here, if you have any questions at this time, be more than happy to answer. I appreciate your time, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Marshall. Shirley, Councilman Morris.
I have a question for Mr. Ramirez, I'm not sure which one is Mr. Ramirez, Tonto National Forest. I had the globe chamomile removed off of my property, five acres, it was a job. I knew it myself, but I'm too old for that. Are there any chemical means or is the national forest concerned about this spreading in your area? Have you done any biology on this that can give us any ideas what we can do, other than just go out there and pull it out one plant at a time?
Well, I would say that, yes, I mean, you can spray it. We've done that on years when it is not wet. And you can make a dent in it. You know, we used Roundup up at the station. But on a year that we had, on the year that we had this year, where it was extremely wet, you know, we saw chamomile all over the valley and in areas where you typically don't see it.
So you find that the Roundup is effective? I heard a lot of grunts in the audience when you-
And a lot of people don't like to, if you have small spots, it can be effective. But you know, like I say, when you have large areas, there's just not much you can do. We usually go out and do it by hand, you know? We get a hoe and it's very labor-intensive, as you can imagine. But I have a lot of bodies. And so for my little chunk of the world, just around the station, you know, we can, you know, do an effective treatment, you know, with hoes and taking care of it.
So are we going to have it forever? I mean, it's here, it's established, and that's it? We've got to deal with it from now on?
It's here. It's just like red broom. It's here, I just, you know, when we have these wet seasons, we're going to have a lot of, you know, the chamomile.
If I could add on to this too, like the town marshal said, every resident needs to help eradicate this issue. We're beyond the preventative side of this now and we're at the real danger point. And as we roll into September, we typically, the monsoons back off, even though we haven't had any monsoons this year. And what is effective for us, David and I live in a world of flame lengths. The little grasses in your yard put up one-to-two-foot flame lengths. Globe chamomile does about a five-foot flame length, which commutes the fire into all your mesquite trees, palaberty trees, and now we have a fire running through the town. So what do we do about it now? Hire somebody with a weed eater and at least knock it flat, so that it doesn't give us such tall flame lengths, something as simple as that. You know, trying to rake it all up, you need a dump truck. But at least if we can get our residents to get a weed eater out and knock it flat to the ground, that will really help both of our agencies in protecting the community.
Well, I have one more.
You got one more? Go right ahead.
Mr. Harrow, is that you, Mr. Harrow, from Maricopa County?
Waters?
I'm sorry, oh, you're Waters?
Yes.
No, Harrow's coming.
Okay, here he is, yeah. By the way, Waters is a great name for a flood control guy. Have you done any scenarios up in Cave Creek? Scenario planning for fire, for wildland fires in Cave Creek?
Not recently. We're always open to doing exercise planning that involves wildfires or floods in any of our jurisdictions. We do in-house exercises where we simulate failures of flood control structures and also wildfires, where we get all our emergency planners together and run through scenarios just so we can stay fresh. And also, we have periodic contact with Marshal Stein to talk about concerns and to go over any issues that may be present.
Okay.
My counsel's just sitting here. Gentlemen, I appreciate this.
That was easy.
Oh, go right ahead, please.
There has been discussion from members of our community about prevention methods in addition to education. Do we have anything formally as a town that can help prevent fires, not just respond?
The best prevention is the education, what's going to cause a fire, what's going to have your fire pose a greater risk than it is. And I think we're doing a good job with the education. Again, there are handouts at town hall as far as what people can do to help build defensible areas around their home. We do advertise, obviously, not to drag trains, just to be careful with open flames in our jurisdiction. I think education's our best tool right now. With, again, we do have to eradicate the globe chamomiles best we can. Like everyone said, it's a new phenomenon for us and it's a very dangerous phenomenon. Corner Chief, it's not going away. He would know.
Okay, for the fire, gentlemen, both of you. You ever seen a raging fire without a healthy fuel load?
No.
No.
So the key here is to decrease the fuel load and make it safe. Thirty feet away from the house.
More.
And then, or more if you've got the energy to do it. And also along the road, because there's two sources where you're going to get, one is near your home and one is near the road where cigarettes or whatever are going to ignite them. And I'm supposed to be asking questions, so is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. And, excuse me, chief. You know, this year, you know, just within the last couple months, the new constructions, I mean, we've had a rash of fires from, you know, the construction sites, the new home construction sites, people grinding, cutting, and, you know, it's almost every day. And, you know, that's not an exaggeration. I mean, you can talk to the other departments in the valley, Scottsdale and Phoenix, and I mean, and, you know, typically on a normal year, you know, the Forest Service isn't going deep into the city. And this year, there's just so much potential that, you know, we've really had to extend how far we go into the city to help our partners. And we've been cooperating and coordinating with the state. And we have leadership that is supportive of us, you know, helping our partners. And that just typically doesn't happen. So we've been pretty fortunate this year, you know, we haven't lost structures.
A follow-up on what you just said about construction fires. What is the answer there? Obviously, you can't stop them from building, I mean, you, education?
Education, you know, I think that, you know, social media and then, and then the other piece of that is, you know, when they start fires, and I hate to say this, and I hope I don't offend anybody, but, you know, when you build people and they know that they can be, you know, have to be responsible for the suppression costs, then, you know, the word gets out there in the community that, hey, you know, we got to make sure that we have everything in place so that we don't start a fire.
I was going to, the preventative methods that we talk about, a 30-foot space from the house to keep a fire coming to your house, works in reverse, too. I was looking at a new home construction off of Creek Canyon or Canyon Creek Road on the other side of the wash, and they have a clear space around that entire structure that they would be hard-pressed to push a fire away from that out into the desert lands. So it works both ways.
So, okay. Counsel? Oh, Councilman Morris.
Just one last thing, maybe it's more for our attorney than anyone else, but in the event that there is a negligent ignition from a building site, are there penalties in either civil or criminal law for that?
Mayor, Councilman Morris, the problem is the pervasiveness of the hazard. Cities and towns have laws to protect property owners from adjacent property owners who allow their property to deteriorate to the point where it's a danger. And you as a government can cite them civilly or criminally, or you can, as a government, can step in and abate the nuisance yourself. Here, we're just talking about one property. And I can't tell you how many towns have difficulties just handling one property. The problem here is you have the problem almost town-wide. But the answer is, if you as a neighbor allow your property to become dangerous to an adjoining property, you could be civilly liable to the adjoining property owner. You as a government need to take steps to try to prevent that from happening. The problem here is the problem is so pervasive. And so honestly, all you can do is educate. Because I can't tell you, of the seven cities and eight cities and towns now that I'm the town attorney, actually, abating a public nuisance is a problem. It's hard, because you've got to cite them, they have property rights, you can't invade their property without a judge letting you know. You can, there is a statute that allows you, a government, to go in and abate it yourself, but you have to come up with a cost yourself at the outset, and there are limits on your ability to collect your costs. So if that's just the problem with one parcel, think what you have with all these parcels. Meaning, I think all you can do is educate. And then try to get your constituents to eradicate the problem.
Thank you.
All right, nothing else from counsel? Well, let's see here.
I'd like to say something. I think one of the reasons I asked to have this on is because I think that for many of the folks who are even sitting here, each of us look at our property and we're overwhelmed. We moved out here for acreage, no one knew that this was going to happen. And as good neighbors, the best we can do is to try and eradicate what we can around our home and anywhere else we can on our properties. Having driven through much of Cave Creek as much as I can, I can tell you, it's worse in other areas than where I live. And it's difficult. And people have spent a great deal of money trying to get rid of it. But I think that the idea of taking that chamomile and just getting it squashed to the ground, if you can't remove it, will keep it from flaming up, as they have said, to a five-foot level versus it being smothered when it's on the ground. And I think education is extremely important. And I think one of the things that I've learned through this process is how much support there is as we are surrounded by Tonto National Forest, and that if something were to occur on a higher level, that we would have a great deal of support in our town to try and suppress it before it spreads through a lot of properties. And I think that's what's important, that each of us has a responsibility to be careful with everything that we do in and outside of our homes. So I appreciate very much you coming and sharing the information with us.
And one last thing- And one last thing that I would like to offer up is, you know, if we have communities that border the national forest, please, you know, talk to us, encourage us to come and treat our property, and we'll do that. I'm in the process of just finishing up 11 miles of treatment along Dynamite on National Forest, and we've had really good community support there. Down on the east side of Rio Verde, we've done a treatment down there along our property boundary. So we would like to extend that to all of the communities that neighbor the national forest, and, you know, and let us come, you know, encourage us to come out, and, you know, we'll treat on our side of the fence, and it's a great community project for us, and we really encourage folks to hit us up. You know, it's ongoing for us, the planning takes a little bit of time, but we have a lot of resources that we can throw at those projects, and it really does, it's a really good way for us to keep fire from, you know, our fire from coming into those communities, and from fires in the communities, you know, from coming onto the Tonto National Forest.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Mr. Waters, I got to tell you, you took my favorite rain gauge away years ago, and I miss it, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any, have you added one to Cottonwood Canyon? Because I see sometimes the flows come out of there that hit Cave Creek wash, and we end up kind of surprised.
Right. We, when we did the flood response plan update, we had planned a couple of gauges. One of them would be on, has to be on private property, on one of the washes. The other one could be up on Cottonwood Creek. USGS operates a gauge on Cottonwood Creek, but it's not really tied into our system, so.
Well, that's unfortunate. Yeah, I've seen some huge flows come out of there, you know, you're showing nothing above Spur Cross, and six or 7,000 CFS come out, and all of a sudden shows up from, you know. Anyway, I appreciate the job that you all do.
Thank you.
Chief Kratz, appreciate that. Let's see.